All right, it is seven o'clock, so I will call this October fourth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the King William Planning Commission to Order. Ms. Christina, we call, please.
Ms. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Hyde. Here.
Yeah.
Ms. Greenwood. Ms. Luther.
Here. All right, review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Everyone had a chance to review that, any? Changes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion? All right. Stephen, we've had a motion that's been properly seconded to approve the meeting agenda for tonight. Joe Colville.
Mr. Collins.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Ms. Luther.
Hi. All right, review and approval of meeting minutes from our September sixth meeting, everyone should have received a copy of this. We have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, meeting minutes amended. Amended, or meeting minutes as presented.
Give a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion? All right, call vote please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, all right, hi.
Ms. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Collins.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Ms. Luther.
Hi. All right, now we will open up the public comment period, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on non-public hearing matters, please state your name, district of residence, or address, you will have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes of speaking on behalf of a group. If speaking on behalf of a group, state your name, district of residence, or address, and the name of the group you are presenting. The public comment period is now open. Anyone wishing to speak online?
We did something that actually might not be better.
All right. All right, this time, we will close the public comment period. And we will move on to item number six, unfinished business, Sherri, do you want to?
So, there's a couple of things, at our last meeting, we went through a special event. We looked at definitions, I believe Christina had presented a application to you. We have redone that application, however, I did not put it in the packet. I would like the county administrator and county administrator to take a look at that as well, some others that we have done. So, we're going to present those to you at the, for the next meeting, if you got a chance to take a look at them as well.
There's something you could email to us.
We can.
Review it ahead of time.
Yeah.
It's something I really don't feel is a real impending priority, that we really need to spend a lot of time on, so if we could.
With that, the special event, it's down to about an age and a half. Made it a lot easier and time-wise, it's not as long to submit it or approve one somewhere.
In approving a document like that, we could get that off of requirement of a.
Well, it's not really an approval, but it's something to look at and provide your feedback to us.
But with that, we would not have to go through a conference of, I mean, a, a.
CUP.
CUP for it.
Um, that's going to be up to y'all, depending on what the special event is. We went through the definition to replace the wayside stands, we did temporary sales, temporary stands, and temporary open air, don't believe that we came up with anything definite on it. We talked about accessory buildings and structures, we did change number six to add for parcels of any size, where the side or rear yards are located in the resources protection area, that they would be able to put an accessory structure in front. We talked about accessory dwellings, structures detached, no more than eight hundred, they can do it if they have a conditional use permit. With that being said, something else has come up that I wanted to bring before you. Under our previous ordinance, we had under residential that an accessory dwelling was permitted by right. It did have a size limit on it, on acreage over fifty, that got taken out. Would that be something that you would consider recommending putting back in?
Do we have any discussion on that, Commissioner? We'd recommend we put that back in. I actually have some discussion on the whole topic, if I may. Um. Let's, um. How much more, how many other points did you have on, on this? I don't want to get bogged down, but at the same time, we need to clarify anything.
Not too many, I think most of what we've went over, I do want to talk about, some more about the ones that we tabled. But we did go through those.
What were your thoughts, Daryl?
Well. I've gone back and read the zoning ordinance from beginning to end for about the third time now. And after last month's meeting, this, this document, I said it from the get-go, and I'll say it again in public forum, it's flawed from beginning to end. And I think the five people up here are very capable of fixing that, but we're going to have to prioritize, take, just like anybody in any business would do, prioritize, because I felt like after last month's meeting, we spent a lot of time just spinning our wheels and got very little accomplished. So, I would like to suggest or make a motion, if I may, to the, to the commission that we prioritize, pick two or three topics each month, starting, and this is just an example, but we really need to work out our TCO. We were talking about played more pools and his beautiful blue fencing up there. We really need to talk about PUDs, because that's looking at us right now, we really need to talk about solar. As important as I think roadside stands and events are, I think it is a total waste of our time and staff's time to put that at the forefront of what we're talking about, I think we should prioritize, get the really big things out of the way. Certainly get to these, these certainly important, we've spent a lot of time talking about stuff that admittedly, just like the events, we don't get a whole lot of applications for that right now. So, we, we have, we have PUDs looking us in the face, we have a TCO that is unclear. It's very hard for our EDA to try to attract businesses here and give them good straight answers when it's unclear about what the rules and guidelines are, so I would just, I would like to make a motion that we identify tonight a couple of topics, give the commission and the staff the next thirty days to properly research just those topics. That gives us time to research those topics, so when we get here, we all can speak knowledgeably and have done our homework, and it will be a better use of staff's time to take them one, one at a time, rather than trying to tackle numerous, numerous things at one time. And it doesn't seem we're getting a whole lot accomplished.
I do agree. Last, last month's meeting was a good example of trying to rush through a lot of different things and what happens when we get bogged down on any one item. I agree with that, there's a lot more impending things that are with businesses wanting to come here and being unclear about certain processes and procedures on building and development, or, or just simply, just simple site plan. Those things, they, they need a clear, a clear picture of what they need to do, and, and I think that concentrating on shoring up the, the business district of the county is probably an area that we really should focus on. And I, and I like that idea of just focusing on one, you know, e- even if it's one thing, if it's a big thing, focus on just that at a, at a meeting. But we need to make sure that we get this right, and it's, and it's good, it's, we don't have to go back and change it at a later date. Other, other thoughts? Ideas on that, is everybody on board with saying, let's, for our, our next meeting in, in October, I'm sorry, in November, we, we focused on, say, the, the TCO in PUDs. Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to that, but I would like to staff response. Okay?
It probably would not be bad to take a couple of things at one time, instead of work on a lot of different things, you could just focus on the certain items.
Wouldn't, would it not be best to, okay, staff's project, because staff are the ones that are out front, that are getting problems coming to them. So, it would, would appear to me that staff should, should be the ones to recommend the project.
We can do that, but we also need to look at the comp plan when we're looking at our ordinance, to make sure that they match up and will work together, that's the big thing.
Yeah, and I think that we can probably work together with the staff to, to ensure that what we're working on is, is, are the most important things, knock those out, and they go to the next important, and so forth, it doesn't have to be, yeah, this is what I think, you know, it may not be, it may not be accurate with, with, you know, what's going on in the front line, so. What would you, with future, with future things coming down the pipeline, what, where would you feel we would be the, serve the best to make sure we shore things up?
Well, I mean, one thing that's important is the TCO area, that's our quarters, that's the first thing that somebody sees. That's where our business is going to be, so I think it is important to, to focus on the TCO. I know we talked a little bit about solar, when I was at a conference, I did talk to a few of the jurisdictions that were there. Some of them do have a cap of three percent on theirs, we talked briefly about that last month. I, I don't know of any solar parks that are coming up immediately, there has been talk, but nothing definite at this point. And of course, we do have a PUD coming in, so.
Would you say that the TCO and, and PUD would be probably?
That would probably be a good start.
Okay.
I will tell you, I don't know if I'm supposed to be, we do have two publications that night.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I know these things that we're reviewing may not seem all that important, but I do believe that they are staff items, that things had come up that were brought to their attention, is why we were trying to address them in the manner that we were.
Yeah, yeah, I just think we just had too large of a list, and, and, and I'll take responsibility for not navigating that, that meeting better than moving us along, but, but I think that bite-sized chunks will certainly do us well in, in US staff as well, so.
And another thing we could probably look at is some of our subdivisions, that we did make a few changes to the exempt parcels, which I think were good. But that's something else we may want to go look at.
So, just to be clear, we can, we can put on the agenda for next month's meeting, the TCO and the PUD. We will have met with the EDA at, at that point, and we'll have a much clearer idea on how we need to put forth items in, in, in the TCO that, that will help their job out, as well with bringing the business to the county, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add to that. Maybe staff has had some of these issues arise, but haven't we also had, in the last week or two, several issues arise out of discrepancies with TCO, and questions about the TCO, and businesses that were trying to come to the county, and were a little unclear about the TCO?
Um, the only one that I have talked with in the past two weeks is the one that we're going to be talking about in closed session.
Okay.
I don't know. I've been dealing with this for a long time. I'm not really concerned that we have that much of an issue with TCO, there's an issue with whether we measure from the right away or the center, and a couple of other issues to plan, and so forth, but I don't, I don't know that that, we need to resolve, but I don't know that that's holding anybody.
Well, there were a few things that were changed in the ordinance, such as exterior materials, that type of thing, that we really need to go back on.
I think we discussed those things, but I'm not quite sure that they got implemented, the way we discussed them.
Yeah, we, we, and we ended up tableing them, so, yeah, at the, I, I would say in our next meeting, we need to have a goal of, you know, up or down votes on certain issues, and to make sure that, that we, we get something that is actually concrete.
And, and as far as staff prioritizing, I mean, I, I agree with that, I have no problem with that, I'm, I'm going to say again, this zoning ordinance is flawed from beginning to end, you and I work with this on a daily basis, and we constantly find things in here that are flawed. I was not a fan of approving it, when it was approved, the comment was made, you know, we've been working on this for two years, let's, let's just get it approved, but now here, we are stuck dealing with it, you're stuck dealing with it, and, and we know the problems that presents on a daily basis, and I, I think it's their job to go through this document, page by page, section by section, and try to clean it up, we cannot do all that in one meeting, two meetings, or five meetings. So, I think everything in here is important, I don't disagree, but we've got to prioritize, and we've got to get it straight, because right, right now, it's, it's very open for interpretation in most sections.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we have a motion on board, have you got a second yet?
To the next item of business?
Yes, go ahead, we need to spend this item, since we have a motion. In other words, Mr. Collins' motion was to prioritize.
All right.
But I think we agree.
Mr. Collins' motion was to prioritize and have a few items on each agenda going forward to, to address this, do we have a second to that motion? I'll say, okay, all right. Should we have a, is that an up or down vote on that, or is it a?
We need another down vote, but we may want to discuss the priorities, as soon as we can approve that.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Our motion carries, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we put as priorities in TCO and the PUD for our next meeting.
Okay, the motion is to prioritize the TCO and the PUD for our next meeting, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion carries, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Do you have anything else on unfinished business?
Um, not at this time, we can't think of anything.
All right, um, let's move along, new business. Item A, discussion of rezoning properties on three sixty.
This is something I, I wanted you to consider, I have Betty working on a map that will show all the parcels from one end of three sixty to the other, it'll show the zonings. I just went from Central Garage intersection to West River Road, and just to look at what does that mean is on the different parcels. We have twenty-one that are R1.
Scut and Shirk ones, West River Road, down three sixty or down thirty?
No, three sixty.
Three sixty.
Yeah. We have twenty-one that are zoned R1, sixteen that are zoned B1, thirty-nine zoned AC, twenty-two zoned B2, and twelve that are zoned industrial. So, it's quite a mixture. We have houses that are zoned business, that are clearly residential, we have businesses that are zoned ag, like Farm Bureau Building, that's seventy, but clearly it's a business, and there were several like that. Then that's, we'll go find the same thing on the other end, except on the other side, you're going to have more AC and more open land on the right-going door, mechanics though. But I did bring copies of our future land use map to take a look at, but I do think it's something we need to, to take a look at, and, and try to get the zoning, you know, pretty straight there, and not have it spot zoning all up and down three sixty.
What is your recommendation to, to go down each, each side of three sixty and, and?
Take a look at them. So, what we have here we have the rest of the commercial, we are considering these.
Can you point out where the new water tower will be on there, just so everybody can have a good idea? Okay. And so, in the immediate area of the water tower, we don't have anything zoned, business doing.
It's not far from the park, but that park is like, we have a couple of other places right now.
But that would be a a primary, would you say, to, to have, so, this is being the locate, location? Now, reviewing the RKG presentation, they had opportunities of growth, you know, listed, you know, for the county, and, and, I mean, it, it was a constant shaded area from one end of the county to the other along three sixty, and I definitely feel like we need to, that, that's where our, that's where our growth is going to be commercially. And, and, and the, the zoning needs to, to be reflective of that as well. Question is, how do, would we be better off B2, since there's some industrial as well in the vicinity?
Um. On the side, we have a lot of very large apartments, also by the one, one. So, now, uh, we, we, whether how buildable it is, but still a lot of those that, that are more, 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 um, towards the first.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, is the intent to rezone everything, or just look at it parcel to parcel, and sort of like a zone, zone it should be? There are several of those parcels in there that are basically not buildable. Be certain what we're looking at, and then, right now, we don't have water and sewer, so a lot of that, so. Definitely. Pretty good discussion, because until we get water and sewer, we're not going to be much built.
And, and even in some of those parcels where they might not be suitable for residential, they very well may be a use for them commercially. So, I, I, I don't want to necessarily discount any, anyone, yeah, but, yeah, but we, I don't, I don't think we want to discount anything, yeah, right, right. All right, Mount Pleasant comes to mind as well.
Mr. Chair, so, if I may, is the goal to just have more cohesiveness as far as what everything is zoned, or is part of the purpose to try to assist some of the properties being rezoned to where businesses could come without it being the burden of the property owner to have to pay to have it rezoned?
Well, we would like to be support, assistance friendly, if we have the property already zoned for commercial, there's probably going to be more out to come in, parts that have to go through all the rezoning process and success, and they are in the process.
So, if certain properties get rezoned from, say, AC to B1, B2, whatever we designated, that will change the tax amounts on those properties correctly, because the values would most likely change.
We briefly talked about that, and I'm not sure, I went over this a few times before, whether this will use the past grade with that.
That would, that would be my concern as well.
Mr. Chairman, just an idea. The properties along three sixty from, from river to river. If we went those properties funding on three sixty and asked the owners, do they wish to rezone their properties to B two? And if they elected to do so, then at that point, they take on the responsibility of paying the B two taxes. That's, they chose to do so. But in doing that, uh, back to part of what Ms. Graham was saying, that then gives our EDA properties out there that are available, ready to go, and makes us more business friendly. If someone has a property on three sixty, whether it be a non-conforming lot, a ag lot or whatever, says, no, thank you. That's certainly their choice, but I think that's the fairest way to do it. Um, talking about buildable versus, you know, I, I think, uh, Dixon's automotive proves you can put a building just about anywhere. Uh, and water and sewer would only help that. The problem with water and sewer, and this is, this is just a businessman talking. You never wanna be on the end of the line because there's no reason for people to run water and sewer too. You always wanna be in the middle somewhere. So I, I think you're gonna see the probability of water and sewer being run from Central Garage to Hailit a lot sooner than you're gonna see it from Central Garage to the Comanche River, just because there's a lot more usable land and available land. But that, that's, that's really irrelevant. If, if we go through and, and post and, and put it out there and have public comments or whatever, have hearings. Hey, this, this is a one-shot deal. If you guys own land on three sixty and you wanna change the zoning on it and you take on the additional taxes associated with it. And that may be, I'm, I'm just saying that may be a good way to look at it, that those who don't do not have to participate, those that do can participate. And they, they take on the, the taxes. And that works well with the EDA so that they do have some land, you know, that's a good four to six months down the road compared to going through the rezoning process.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, um, I don't personally, I think this. Business, order, planning committees, and planning staffs, uh, responsibilities by them, out there, probably others. We may be able to look at this and that from the ground with safe people that would be, uh, in favor of rezoning, let us know. But that, that's not the responsibility. I said, maybe the responsibility of the EDA. But, uh, some of this discussion, I think we'd be better to wait until that, uh, actually, with the EDA goes there. Are some issues that members of the EDA have identified and I have noted that, uh, parcels that, uh, and then identified by EK, EHA as being good prime lots for commercial. And that's, uh, that just, no. So, uh, I do think we need to wait until after. And after that discussion, so what we want to do is that.
Uh, well, I think that we're probably gonna have a lot of information, you know, that we're gonna, uh, this can be brought up in the, in our joint meeting with the EDA, so it'll probably help guide us a lot, not just the TCO discussion, but also the, you know, um, and, and kind of rezoning efforts we do, so.
Uh, I, I'd just like to add to that. I mean, I, I respectfully disagree with that in that by definition, it's their job to plan. And I think that is planning for the future, for future growth, and that, that does work closely with the EDA, which I think, you know, in my opinion, again, is what we need to be doing. But just my opinion.
Well, I think the, I think the main, the main hang, hang up probably there was just for clarification is how we implement going about figuring out which properties. Is, would that be correct? Figuring out which properties, whether we go, whether somebody goes door to door or whether we do a blanket, you know, uh, change to the zoning?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Wagner. I don't, I don't think we go door to door. That's not their job. But I think we, we advertise and we put it out there to say, this is what we're thinking about doing. Get the public comments. Let's talk about it. Let's, let's feed it backwards and forwards. And then if, if it's all positive, then maybe we, you know, those folks who wanna partake in that, bring your, your application in and make it happen.
Well, I definitely, um, think we need to work closely with the EDA on the rezoning, um, because this is a commercial, you know, base. Um, and if we get to like where we are gonna rezone, uh, that everybody around that air, whole area is gonna have to be notified and there will be public hearings. We, we don't, just can't just do it. We do have to hold public hearings, so.
Okay. Now, would, would we incorporate the, the secondary streets like Sharon into that?
Well, right now, we were just gonna focus on three sixty. Um, they do have a dual, um, so we'd have to look at that when we're looking at rezoning. Yeah, and the problem with, uh, Sharon, and it's mostly all commercial through there. But it's so high off of three sixty that, well, I know that Southern State has an entrance off of three sixty, but it is hard to get a entrance cut in there.
So, so from a planning standpoint or, or a zoning standpoint, and, and I, I appreciate that's a, that's a practical approach there. That, that hill does not make it.
It's hard to, to do anything.
So as, as a, as a group, we could work to maybe make sure those entrances are off of Sharon Road where that hill does exist.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree that we should probably look at some of these things and possibly, you know, if the pros outweigh the cons, um, potentially do some rezoning in those corridors that makes more sense. Uh, but I do have a concern as far as the tax concern to make sure that the county has a way to address that if we're not going to impose upon the property owners to have to pay the rate at which we rezone, which may be higher than or lower than what they already have. I, I would want to know that if we're going to defer those in some way, that the county has a way to actually do that. I, I think that makes more sense because we would need to know that prior to going into any type of formal action from a public hearing perspective, because I think there will be a lot of questions raised around that.
Uh, we, we need, we need to research the state code because there may be some state code issues, uh, happening during the rezoning.
I will want to talk with the Commissioner of Revenue, um, and get with the County Administrator on the tax rates and how that would be handled.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, I was suggesting that people who want to rezone, rezone. And at that point, they understand that they're gonna be paying the higher commercial rate, that we would not impose that zoning on someone who did not want that and then impose that higher.
Sheriff, uh, Mr. Sheriff, I, I will say one thing that, that I've always been opposed to, uh, rezoning property before we know what the property is gonna be used to. Because when we rezone it, uh, from AC to B two, uh, there are a lot of things that can be done with that, uh, that we have no control over. And we have a whole lot more control over it when they have the rezoning and the application for building or whatever they're gonna do with the property coming at the same time. Cause then we can have a lot more control over how that's handled.
Yeah, but, but in what's allowed in B two, allowed in B two? Not. I mean, if you have.
Something.
But if what's allowed in B two by right and somebody rezones, we're already saying that's allowable in B two.
That's, that's where you get in some problems if, if it's allowed by right. And a lot of things are allowed by right. For instance, a, a shopping center is allowed by right in B two. We, we have control over the parking. We have control over landscape and we have control over lighting, but we don't have any control over the shopping center itself with what.
Well, I'll just say before we move things along, we just need to make sure we have a balance of, um, of what we feel the land would be used well for. And if we, if we look at a parcel and say, you know what, there's some things in B two that just would not be suitable for this particular parcel, then we, that we can go B one with it or however we feel is most appropriate. But what we wanna make sure of as well is that it, we are reflective of our, uh, the business friendly mindset that we're hoping to attract businesses, you know, good, good quality businesses.
That's, that's, and, and I don't want to prolong this discussion, but let's, let's look at a balance between what's business friendly. Uh, the sum and what's best for the general public is all. Uh, and that's where your issues with landscaping inside and that kind of thing comes in. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, I would.
Yep. All right, um, affordable housing?
So I did put something in your, um, packet from the Code of Virginia on affordable, uh, dwelling unit ordinance. Uh, this is something that we also have in our comp plan, uh, that we wanna see as affordable housing. But we need to look at it's the incentives that we could give a developer, um, say the developer has two or three lots within the development. If he's gonna do that, then we're gonna give him additional credit to allow him to have another two lots or, or something along that line. That's what a lot of the localities are doing. If a percentage is permitted, then they'll give them credit to do another two, two lots and they'll, they'll do some toward the.
When we say another two lots, we mean another two regular lots, not, not.
But don't we already have something very similar to that in our clusters?
We do have something in the cluster, but that's the only section.
So you're talking about something very similar to that?
Similar to that.
But that would be allowed in majors?
In our major subdivisions.
So I think the way the cluster reads is for every, uh, for every one affordable house that meets the median price range or below, for every five, I think you gain an additional lot.
I think it's a three to one, but don't.
Yeah, and don't. But you're speaking of something very similar.
Yeah, if they have three, then they can do another regular lot. Even though it, it would meet the, the area requirements, um, where we have the five to one, uh, ratio, so.
Let me, let me ask this question, um, is it more of a foundational question? Do we have a affordable housing shortage in the county, in your opinion?
We do. It, it's very hard for, um, a young family to come in and, um, buy a house. And we had, uh, Renee Robinson come out and speak, uh, with Habitat. She gave a really good presentation. You know, the affordable housing is fourteen hundred square feet, standard size, Ranger. Um, and you know, they're going for three fifty, four hundred thousand. But under the affordable housing, you know, they would go a lot, a lot less and it makes it easier for these young families that are coming in to, to be able to afford them.
Renee was at the tax sale and they bought two lots that are, are not very desirable lots and those, they bid those up in excess of fifty thousand dollars. So that coupled with building prices, you'd be hard pressed to put a house in Kingling County under probably two seventy-five. So I don't, I don't know how.
Or didn't Renee say a hundred and eighty?
I think the sale is probably over two. I, I don't remember exactly what it was, um, but where it comes in is, you know, they, they help with them, with the financing, um, where they can get that payment down. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a cheaper home. It's not built cheaper. It's just the, the rate and it's what is cheaper where they're able to afford that monthly payment.
Those, it's not. Theirs is a lot of pre-labeled too. And, and donated items.
What drawbacks do you see?
I'm sorry.
Drawbacks do you, do you foresee with, with, uh, with anything like this?
I don't see anything about it. I know a lot of people have that, that stigma when you say affordable housing, but they're just like any other house. Um, and, and they're in the middle of all the other houses. You would not be able to draw down the road and know which one was which. I mean, they're all built the same way, so. They're, they're nice. They're actually, they're built nice, nice homes.
Mr. Chair, yes, Ms. Graham, one thing, um, what happened with the packet property? I know we allowed them to do some affordable housing. Did that get scrapped or I know, did that section just not, I noticed nothing else has been happening over there. They had an affordable housing section that was supposed to come in that we approved, but did it ever?
Which property is it?
The packet property. One of those sections was supposed to be affordable housing. Like I said, we got into so much grief about it because everybody thought it was hood house. After that, hood housing, it's not a portable care house.
Oh, right in the apartment, in the apartment.
Right.
They were taken section eight. They're not section eight.
Right.
But they are income based.
Right, but did it ever get built or?
Yeah, we did have, um, the first section that was built. That they're income based, but they're not.
Right, right. That's what I mean. That's similar to this, similar to affordable dwelling units, right? It's not hood or.
Yeah.
So your, your recommendation would be to, to put in language that mirrors the cluster?
We need to, to look at that and try to get something in our ordinance similar to our cluster, uh, for our, our major developments in our one.
Any other, is everybody in agreement on that? Yeah.
We can, uh, when we get to that point, I'll do some, um, wording or tell, take a look at it. But, but I probably will keep it similar to what we have at the cluster.
All right, so do you think we'll only try to address that in the, in the R one subdivisions?
Well, we have them in the R, if we put them in R one, we'll have them in the R one and in the cluster, um, we really, I mean, our miners are four lots, uh, for them. I probably don't see them going into a miner.
Would it, uh, would it be helpful to do some kind of special zoning in the R one or, I mean, in the AC areas?
I'm not sure. I mean, we've got several now. Oh, we, um, several different types. We could do farmstead that we've got in there. However, you know, their minimum of fifteen acres per parcel, that's not gonna fall under affordable housing.
All right. Next on the agenda item, uh, we have our next meeting is gonna be a joint work session with the EDA. Sharon, do you have any, any further on that or?
I don't, but, uh, I did wanna find out if there's anything in particular that you wanted me to, um, have ready for that meeting. Hopefully I'll have the maps ready and we can talk with them a little bit about that if we want, so.
And my, my big thing is the, the TCO, honestly, so, um, maybe it's, you could just have a handout for, for that. I think it's only a few pages out of our.
It's not very much.
Anybody else have?
Well, probably the, the big question that, to echo what you just said and add a little bit to it, with the, the EDA's big concern is gonna be TCO. And so the two things we've already covered here, that's, but I think as much information as we could have on that and look at some other counties who have done the, the blanket rezoning and how that works for them.
Do you think it would, uh, be helpful to have a copy of the make cuts for everybody? That would show what's permitted in each zone?
Yeah, I think so. Anybody else have anything?
Do we, Sharon, do we have the abilities to do, um, contour maps?
I don't think we do.
Okay.
Betty is our GIS guru and she's working on trying to, to do the whole width of, uh, three sixty and, and do it large enough that we can see what it is and, and get the zoning for us, so. Uh, but we, we don't do contours on. And get the zoning for us, so, uh, but we, we don't do contours on it.
All right. Uh, next item, staff special committee reports, uh, Ms. Grover.
During the month of September, um, I was actually sharing my vote. Uh, I was actually helping roll out for, um, zoning experience with the conference and then Andy and I were actually, um, in training. Enrichment for some property maintenance officials. And so you're not going to see a lot of, uh, permit activities, but in this gather report, um, for you. The one that you will not see is the violation law, we're still working on that, but you'll see the permit activity, uh, report. That shows the details of the ones that were issued, that were approved and that were denied after the month of September. So then you can, you might serve it. And then you'll see the detail, uh, of the ones that were actually, uh, paid for during the September. And you'll see the E N S and the zoning inspections that were done by the department. And then we don't have department, um, permits that were issued, um, then their inspection details. And we will get to the violation laws as soon as those were, those are completed, that's the annual, um, reports that I do. And so that takes several hours as soon as I get that, we'll get back to the board.
Anything else?
I, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, about the, the Edmund software. Is that the same software that's being used by every department now? So the, the, the log that you put together, the violation log and the permits and all of that is, is a lot of great information. Is, how is that information being shared with the other departments so that they can utilize that information? Not that they would utilize violation or stuff like that, but like when certificate of occupancies are issued. Does that trigger the commissioner revenues office to go out and pick those properties up and get them on the tax roll in a timely fashion? Because in years past, those properties were not picked up for, for some time years. And were not added to the tax roll, which was a tremendous loss of revenue.
Was that, was the purpose of office that you're actually issue by the part, or, or by building inspection department? On that, I can't really answer that question, but saying how they disseminate that information, uh, to the commissioner of revenues office. But I, Sherri, do you?
Uh, actually the commissioner of revenue should have access to Edmunds. We have access to, uh, some of their records. I would double, need to double jump with Betty, but they should be getting the CEOs as they're issued.
Mr. Chairman, could I clarify? Sure. We just talked about this last night at our meeting and long discussion. That cannot be done at this time because the reports are so messed up. There's still some of the reports are in bright, some of the reports are Edmunds, so Commissioner revenue just asked us yesterday. If she could get two more people in her department, she might be able to handle that in the future, not now, in the future. So right now, none of this stuff gets on the tax records until a year later. I actually know, she told us it doesn't get on the records until an assessment. So the last five years, we haven't had anything go on the record because we haven't had an assessment. We threw out the last assessment, so no additions, no anything, no pools, no porches, no, nothing has been recorded. And so no money is coming to the county. She asked us if we could get more money to her department so that they could do that. Once Edmunds finally gets it straight, but she says the software that we use with Edmunds. They're having so much trouble getting the other departments to work with it with other things. With D M B right now, if you get a property taxes done, they're not even thinking about doing it for the records for, for real estate. So she says that there's so much, that much trouble with them dealing with D M B. She thinks it's going to be the same thing. But she had hopes that maybe in the future that would happen because that's what she said, which was brought to her attention also. It needs to be done. That's what happened with the previous commissioner revenue. It was on the bright system. They would get the reports and sometimes they would put the information in and then it would go, like you said, if you got a porch addition, you had another kind of addition. It would go immediately and they would update your records and tax would get updated. But now she said it won't get updated unless the new assessment comes out and they happen to notice, oh, that house didn't have a porch. Or three thousand square foot addition last time we went through, so. They're going to hopefully get caught and then the commissioner revenue said, once everything, once this assessment is done, hopefully. They're supposed to go to every parcel. That's why we had trouble with the last assessment, they did, but supposedly everything's supposed to be caught. Pictures, everything that's out there in person should be updated when this assessment comes out. So after the assessment comes out, hopefully any new addition, any new porch, any new anything, seawalls. Like she said, we don't get taxes for any of this stuff. We should get taxes for foundation work, we should get taxes for porches, so outbuildings, any kind of work. Cause it's like, if you spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a seawall, that improves property immensely, but we don't get anything from it. So she was hoping that we would do that. Give her more people in her department, but hopefully it can be done. But as of this time, it's just not being done, hopefully.
So there is a disconnect there, but it sounds like it's outside the scope.
Right, but we are working on it, trying, because we know there's, there's a lot of income that's lost.
It is, yeah.
One thing, Mr. Greenwood, that, that just to make a point to what you're saying, and, and I've said it for years. When a new house is built in the county. And it closes. Taxes are taken out at closing and they're putting to an escrow account. The bank does not voluntarily send those into the county. The county has to ask for that money to be sent in. And there are hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that's waiting to be asked for and claimed that is not claimed.
That we might be able to push because it's something that they could just ask for. Cause she said certificates of occupancy does get sent through, but these extra things don't, so that would be. But who would, does the commissioner revenue do that or couldn't she?
I know this is outside the planning commission, but my, my, my biggest comment was if, if the zoning office can go into Edmunds and put logs. Of who took out permits and who had violations and all of that. It just seems odd to me that that same information can't be extracted for the commissioner revenues office and the other offices for the good of the county. Well, not, not one, so.
Then could I segue into just one thing while we're on this, because it's something that maybe, uh, had been brought to my attention. I think Mr. Kellum, although said that two years ago, um, which does have handled the planning commission. We do charge things with Sherri's department, building permits and things that you have to get, but only certain things are allowed at building permits. There's a lot of, like Mr. Kellum said, a lot of subsidiary of working groups that deal with building. That don't have to have a building permit or even a business license. If we could get, like, if you have a porch person come in and do a porch on your house, they don't have to have a permit, but they should. A roofer, roofer doesn't have to have a permit.
And are we, are we even collecting on the business license at all?
We're not, but if we, if we charged just like a forty dollar, fifty dollar, just a minimal charge, that way they could get in the books, Sherri's department would have. The, the businesses licenses for these places, they would have a minimum charge and then they would get a permit for anything like that. It would be, I don't know how much, maybe.
We, we, we're one of the only counties around here.
Do it.
The, the builder, plumber, electrician, heat and air and gas are the only ones that have to get permits. Putting, foundation, frame and roof and drywall, paint, canons, carpet, light, whatever. Do not have to get any type of permit, they are not required to, no one tracks them getting business licenses. And every other jurisdiction, if they're asked, they go in and it's, it's typically anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars. And these people would gladly pay it, but nobody's asking for it, so they're not going to volunteer for it.
This is something to look in the future.
Back to, back to the Edmunds, if, if we can track violations, why can't we track stuff like that? That would produce money for the county.
Yep. Then maybe we could afford to pay for somebody to look for these things, right?
I would just assume that the builder would be responsible for the painting. Everything.
I think it's talking about like renovation work or something like that.
Some of that individual business licenses, I mean, the builder would never get a business license for the painter.
Well, the painter should.
They should have their own hundred dollar business license.
All right, uh, moving along here, the last on our agenda outside of the closed meeting, um, commissioner comments. This might be first.
Um, as usual, thank everyone who came out tonight and, and is in attendance and those who joined. Yeah, online, and I think we've had some good discussions tonight.
Greenwood. You know, the site's coming, so people should, for the, come in, we don't have a lot of people this time, there's like just three, sometimes we have quite a few, but. And the audience looks like three, two, set staff, so three and three, but it's better than nobody's. You know, thanks for coming and, uh, I know everybody is on holiday next week for the state and for county, Columbus Day. How important that is, but I guess everybody have a happy holiday. Like I said, it was a good meeting, I think, and we get some of this done. I look forward to meeting with the E D A, because like I said, we need to get the, the businesses and they are kind of confused about. What businesses have to have and not, maybe we all on the same page. They could not have a checklist of stuff, we could get some people in here because they have, they have some, a good, uh, resources they could use if they just tapped into it. They can get money too, if we ever get into the point where they could get a loan for a big piece of property or do something that maybe we'd want them to do. But if they don't know where we're, want them to head, they don't know, like I said, we haven't really done a lot with them in the past, so I look forward to doing something.
Well, I'm not going to thank the people that came down here, but my.
They're all the same people, they have to come.
I think we've covered a lot tonight, uh, we, we. We're trying, you're trying to move meetings on, so we've been, can, can get on with, uh, if we, if we're talking about P P O and probably next month, uh, we're going to hit them on. That, that's a lot of stuff. Uh, and a lot of needed stuff, um, and I think we can get through it. I think we, we've been, the T C O, we talked about it, I think we all know where we need to go. We still have some to sprint about, but that's. We got a meeting next Wednesday with the E D A and. I'm really, well, I'm, I'm looking forward to that meeting in a way, but I'm really concerned about. Where we're going from here, uh, and I've said it before, I've said it to the E D A. They're not moving forward, uh. They've got a consultant in there now that's doing some good work for them and hopefully that will take and. They will find a way to move ahead, but I think we need to, as Sherri said, we need to work with the E D A. We need to do what we can, but we also. Need to know what our roles and responsibilities are individually, uh, what ours is, what E D A's is. And I, I think we're going to do a lot about that on Wednesday, next Wednesday night. But, um, we just need to go to that meeting, pay attention. Listen to what the consultant says, how does that meld with what we've been doing? How does that meld with, with our comp plan? The discussions we've had in our comp plan and the demographics that we have in our comp plan. Uh, we need to pay close attention to that and see how we can pull all that together and hopefully help the E D A out in their, their role. That, that's what.
Chullen. Um, I think we have some very good diverse group of people on the planning commission as well as the E D A. I would like to, I know everybody gets tired and, and, and these meetings drag on one, but I feel like it's their job. I feel like time spent now will save so much time later. Uh, not only for us, but for staff. And, and I just, I have so much confidence in our planning commission and our E D A. I personally would like to see the groups work together, try to resolve a lot of this. I'm, as a whole, it has nothing to do with the E D L, the planning commission. Um, I see some of the money we spend on studies and groups and so forth and so on, it's become quite a bit of money. Um, and I, uh, I personally don't see where we get a whole lot of value out of that. Uh, I think ninety percent of it we could do ourselves and then it would have been a product. And I, I'd just like to see us as the two groups and ultimately goes up to the board that, that we, we spend the time and go through that. We're, we're all very knowledgeable people and can work a lot of this stuff out ourselves.
Thanks, sir. Uh, and I'll, I'll agree that we've had some good discussions tonight and I hope those continue. And yeah, we do come from some different backgrounds for sure, which, uh, which is a good thing because, uh, when we have discussions, if, if everybody agrees. Um, that's a dangerous thing because that group thing can get you in trouble. And, um, we need to be able to talk through things and, and see things from different perspectives and, and, um, and we have to do that in order to put out a good product. I think that these, um. If being able to take these bite sized portions is going to really help us, um. I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully getting some good language into the zoning ordinances is, is going to be something that will help the staff out tremendously. Yeah, just having something where. If I had a wish list of sorts, uh, I've had a couple of conversations just in the last couple of weeks that, um, where. I feel like there's confusion when somebody wants to build something in the county or they're looking into a development with the county. They're not sure what they need to do or where they need to go. And I don't know if that's something that we can have a. Like a plaster on the front page of the website, you know, you know, how do I do this? And, and they give you the, the list of everything you need to do. Have a contact if you're a developer, um, you know. Maybe they don't need to go to Sherri's office, you know, directly until they, until they need to. It might be just simple things that like the, a member of the E D A might, you know, might be a, a front person for developers coming to the area. Something to, you know, to be a, to be able to streamline things so that when these developers come and they're inquiring about things, they. They know what they can and can't do, they know where they need to go with questions, then, yeah, I don't know. I don't know the solution to that right now, but, um, maybe just something to, you know, rocking somebody's shoe to, to, to think about. Um, you know, just, uh, you know, talk with the, um, with the, um, manager of business in King William earlier in the week. And that, that, and he just was at a loss what he really needed to, to do, uh, on, on some developments with his company, so. But, um, yeah, I think that when it comes to the E D A, um, in our joint meeting with them, yes, we're, we're two different, uh, boards. But, um, but we have to work together, um, for the betterment of the county. If we, if we're at odds or in, in disagreeing, if we're putting forth things that, that hamper their efforts. It's not, it, all, all I know is that we haven't really seen a whole lot of movement on developments in the county, um, in the last couple of years. And we're not there yet and there's a reason for that. And I think that, um, meetings like next week should help move that, move that ball forward, so. Um, at this time, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is our closed meeting. Do I have a motion, uh, to move or with that?
Mr. Chairman, and according to section two point two dash three seven one one A five of Code of Virginia. I move that King Ring County Planning Commission convene and close a meeting to discuss a prospective business or industry. Or expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made.
Motion's been made and properly seconded and is ready to discussion. All right, uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Kellum?
Yes.
Hi. Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Raymond?
Aye.
Thomas Pluto?
Aye. All right, special carries, and so this meeting is now convened and closed session.
We're going in the conference room.
All right, to reconvene in open session, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reconvene in open session. Do we have a second?
One second.
Our motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Kellum?
Sorry?
Mr. Kellum, uh, Ms. Hyde? Ms. Wagoner?
Hi.
Ms. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Bluder?
Hi. We are now reconvene in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the King Ring County Planning Commission approved standing resolution one, S R one, in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended certifying that the supposed meeting was conducted in conformity with the requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Motion's been dated, um, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, mission's made properly seconded in the discussion. Please call a roll.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Kellum?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde? Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Chairman Bluder?
Hi. I don't think there's anything that's in action, so. Yeah, we'll move to adjourn if anybody wants to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion?
Do we have to? Oh.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Ms. Kellum?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde? Chairman Bluder?
Hi. We are now adjourned until our joint meeting on October twelfth. See y'all soon.